All of that, they also had a general assembly session. So they did a lot of, a lot of activity that, and I'll present some bills to you today that have a material impact on what the school system does. So what I'll start off with is just kind of a general synopsis. This is what they refer to as a short session, so this should be a 45-day-long session. It's because they do a biennial budget. This is the non-budget session, although most of their time is spent on budget anyways, even in a non-budget session. It was supposed to be 45 days, they did go one day overtime, simply because they didn't finish the budget on time and they had to wait 24 hours to print the budget so people could read it and, and have their final vote. So it was actually a 46-day-long session, 2,000 bills, so you can do the math, over 45 days, they looked at 2,000 bills. And by the way, they usually do take weekends off, so usually it's just a Monday through Friday, so you can see kind of how many bills per day they were going through. And the one amazing thing to me about the Virginia General Assembly, especially when you compare it to Congress, you compare it to other legislatures, is they actually do look at every single bill. Every bill at some point gets a subcommittee hearing, a committee hearing, every, virtually, on rare occasion, a bill will, will just kind of fall by the wayside, but almost every single bill does get some sort of a hearing. So that volume of work, they really are looking at everything that's put in front of them. Of the 2,000, little under half passed, were sent to the governor for the governor's consideration. And then for our purposes, about 400 bills, and actually it's probably up to about 420 at this point, that, bills that had some sort of an impact on, on FCPS. And that could be anything from something having to do with procurement issue, it could be anything, you know, obviously testing, obviously budget, but there were 400 different pieces of legislation that had some sort of a possible impact on FCPS. Now, not all of them did, right, because we sent them in for evaluation and our staff can come back and say, "This doesn't have an impact on us, we already do what this is proposing." So not everything that, that gets proposed does have an impact, but we do, we did send that number of bills out to staff for their consideration. And you all saw that number of bills as well, because you were involved in the, the bill routing process, you saw when we were sending them to the departments as well. All right, so to jump right in, I understand that Lee and Alice may have told you a little bit about the budget side, but I wanted to highlight at least a few pieces of the Appropriations Act that linked into you all's priority positions in your legislative package. So you had, the state did put in the state share of additional salary money, so an additional 2%, not for the full year, it didn't start July 1, it started September 1, so it's not, it's never the full amount, they never seem to do a, a full year. So, so it was about nine, nine to 10 months' worth of, of funding for that additional 2% salary increase. There was some money put in to the state's at-risk add-on. The at-risk add-on is targeted towards school divisions that have high concentrations of poverty. The disadvantage of that program from an FCPS perspective is that the way they measure poverty is by percentage of overall division, they don't do it by numbers of students. So we, so FCPS doesn't show up as high on the list as you otherwise might if it was done on a per pupil basis. And that's actually why I also added the supplemental lottery per pupil allocation. That money did come back to us on a per pupil basis, that's not necessarily targeted towards at-risk funding, but during the general assembly session, there was some discussion about how best to send some funding back to schools, and part of the debate was the at-risk methodology versus the supplemental lottery methodology. What they ended up doing was they put money into both programs.
Michael, just for the board on that, can you, can you double down right there? Because that's what I call a nugget. The special needs population funding, you're saying was poverty based, based on percentage of poverty?
It's division-wide percentage.
Division-wide percentage?
Yes.
Then the supplemental lottery per pupil allocation is number of students?
Number of students, correct.
So where we need to go for advocacy at the state level is for these additional formulas to take the per pupil approach, where we have the sixth, seventh-largest division in terms of number of kids, instead of the percentage approach.
And you see that in some formulas, not so much at the state level, but like the, the Title I formula, there, there is a component that deals with per pupil, there's a component that deals with division-wide percentages. So there are, there are other ways to allocate.
Could I have a clarifying question on that? And I, I think I know the numbers, but I think it's like we have 54,000 children who, but I think the percentage overall is 29, is that right? Does anybody know? 29?
Yeah, it's 29% off FRM, and the percentage, Mari, you remember off the top?
That is the percentage.
Yeah, it's 29%.
54,000.
29 is the percentage, and I think 54, 55 is the number?
Okay, I just wanted that publicly out there so people understand.
And, and as we always, and as we always like to highlight, we have the, the chart that we do every year, that 54,000 students is more than all but about 10 school divisions in Virginia have total numbers of students. So there's a huge, you look at our special needs populations, and they would rank among the top 10 in school division size overall in Virginia. All right. I have been doing this job for 19.
We have one more clarifying.
Yeah, yeah, could I ask you for one, for clarification?
Sure, of course.
Quick, is, our measure of poverty, is that uniform throughout the state?
Yes. Yeah, it's based on, it's based on free and reduced lunch eligibility, and that percentage is the same, and that percentage is the same everywhere in the Commonwealth.
Doesn't matter which loc, where in the state?
No.
With the cost of living?
No, it's not adjusted for cost of living, it's a, it's a straight dollar figure.
Straight dollar figure, okay, thank you.
All right, so school calendar, this is the Labor Day bill. I have been doing this job for 19 years, and I have had bills on school calendar for 19 years. This is the first school calendar bill that has ever changed the Labor Day law. It, it was complicated, and as you can see from this slide, it doesn't simply say, "The state has repealed the Labor Day law." There were a lot of kind of twists and turns in terms of how this ended up, ended up landing. And really, what ended up happening was where you stood now as a school division had a bearing on what your eventual calendar would look like under this new system. So if you were a school division that had never had a, a Labor Day waiver, so if you were Arlington, Alexandria, you'd never been eligible for a Labor Day waiver, you would be able to start as many as 14 days prior to Labor Day, and as long as you gave a Friday holiday, the, the Friday before Labor Day off. So there's a, a group of school divisions that have that as their, as their, their calendar prescription. Fairfax, because we already had a calendar waiver, we were grandfathered, but we were only partially grandfathered. We were grandfathered in terms of the number of days we could start prior to Labor Day. You all can set your calendar whenever you want, there's no 14-day restriction, but you do have to give the Friday prior to Labor Day off as a holiday. So that was a second group of jurisdictions. There was a third group of jurisdictions that had held waivers because in the 2011-2012 budget, they had grandfathered those school divisions in and locked in their waivers. Those divisions, even if they had lost their eligibility for waivers otherwise, kept that waiver because that language kept, stayed in the Appropriations Act year after year after year. Any of those school divisions, they have no restrictions at all in terms of their calendar, they can start when they want, and they do not have to worry about the Friday holiday. So it's a complicated, multi-tier system, but the bottom line is, is that every school division in Virginia has some additional flexibility over their calendar that they didn't have before. All right, now in terms of teacher licensure, there were a number of bills that really dealt in the area of flexibility for teacher licensure in terms of how, how potential candidates can, can get their licensing. One bill that we worked on a good deal was Senate Bill 1575, which dealt with dual enrollment, which dealt with eligibility for dual enrollment faculty to teach, be eligible to teach both at the K-12 level and at the higher education level. As you've, I'm sure have discussed, there are, there's a disconnect both at the K-12 level and at the higher ed level in terms of higher ed faculty being able to teach at the K-12 level and K-12 faculty being able to teach at the higher ed level. This bill only directly addressed the issue of existing faculty at the higher ed level being able to teach and students be able to get credit at the K-12 level. So what it created was it kind of created a streamlined licensure process, so if you were already employed by Northern Virginia Community College, you'd be able to get a streamlined license for the K-12, the K-12 side. It does not address the K-12 teacher who wants to be able to teach a dual enrollment class but isn't eligible because they don't meet the, the eligibility criteria at the higher ed level. That has been put off to a study. The study's going to be handled by ABTEL, which is the, the state's licensing, state's licensing body. They're going to do a study of that issue to look at how to better align K-12 and higher ed for their licensure criteria. So it's a, to try and create a more streamlined process. They did the study through ABTEL as opposed to doing it as a standalone, because any standalone study actually generates an expense for the state, and any study that had an expense attached to it just fell by the wayside during this session, they didn't want to spend any money on any of that, so they had to put it within an existing body, and ABTEL was the most logical place to, to put that, put that study. In addition, I also wanted to highlight that as part of the budget, I said that this didn't, that the legislation didn't address the issue of K-12 teachers being able to teach at the higher ed level. There was a budget amendment that was adopted, or that at least is in the budget right now, that is going to provide some tuition scholarships for existing K-12 teachers to get that additional coursework that they need to be able to be eligible to teach dual enrollment courses, so to be able to do master's-level coursework in particular subject areas. So there was funding put in to address the other side of the coin, it's just they didn't change the licensure side of it at all.
So let me, let me just jump on that. It's great that higher ed can teach some of our kids, I'll take that, that's part one, but the huge game changer is not more state money to help people go through the massive amount of hoops it takes for our teachers to become certified to teach dual enrollment, which is 18 additional credits in some cases. Teachers are not going to spend a whole nother year or two of study to teach kids dual enrollment, and we don't give, we don't incentivize, there's no additional salary lane because you teach dual enrollment. So we've got to figure out how we break down that border, this artificial barrier of entry of our teachers to be able to teach this dual enrollment. And there's a lot of other moving parts, and maybe it can't all be discussed tonight in one place, but we need to make those barriers come down both ways.
All right. So a couple of just additional pieces of legislation to highlight in terms of licensure. There are, there were other bills that dealt with, with additional licensure issues. One deals with teachers who are not able to pass the practice but who have otherwise completed every other requirement, so there's, there may be a streamlined process to, to allow some of those teachers to become eligible for licensure. The alternate route to licensure bill, House Bill 2486, would allow you as a board to actually petition for alternate routes to licensure. This arose out of an interest in licensing for Montessori programs, and instead of just making it licensing for Montessori programs, they made it a more generic system so that you could ask for alternate routes to licensure for particular types of, of programs. Micro credentials kind of falls under that same category where this, this allows teachers to take a, a small amount, micro credential, of additional coursework to be eligible for, for endorsements in, particularly in STEM areas, so to be able to get some more technical skills and to be eligible to teach some of the more technical courses. And then licensure application process modernization, there's budget language. If you can believe it, and I'm sure you can, the state still does virtually all of its licensure process by paper. And this is, this is one of, one of the ways that they're trying to streamline that process is to allow for electronic submission, is to allow for, for some electronic documentation, which I think would be huge for us, it's, it's a huge process change, but you know, the, the state is being dragged into the, I guess, the 20th century, not even the 21st.
Well, we're all being dragged in, Michael, from manual paper records to electronic records, and this is just another example, a massive part of our business that's done, manual records. When you had the micro credentials for board, that's the Board of Education is going to come up with a micro credential?
Correct.
Because that's a game changer for us too, once we know how many courses we're talking about, that we could set up, offer our teachers.
Because you can individually target particular subject areas, correct. All right. Next two bills address an issue that you all are familiar with in terms of your ability to place stop-arm cameras on school buses, and then to be able to send the summons to people who have passed stop-school buses. This, this legislation fixed what we think was kind of the last legal impediment from, from our perspective in terms of our ability to implement this type of program. So, you know, this does, this, this does directly relate to one of the positions that you all have had for, for a number of years. You might remember that the, the House in particular, but the Senate as well, spent a lot of time during the last off-session on school safety issues. So it's not surprising that you saw a number of bills dealing with school safety in various, various iterations. One of the most significant ones, I think, is some new training requirements for school resource officers and also for school administrators in terms of, in terms of school safety. So the first part of this, these two bills require some compulsory minimum training standards, which will be set up by the Department of Criminal Justice Services at the state level for law enforcement personnel who become SROs. Largely, that is, those requirements are supposed to align with what academies are already doing, so in terms of a police, a police officer goes to a Fairfax Academy and becomes an SRO, that training should be embedded in what they're already learning. That's the intent, and that's something we're, we'll keep an eye on as the, as the specific requirements are developed at the DCJS level. So that's, that's the, the SRO component of it, and then there's a secondary requirement that you have at least one person in every school building, one administrator, who has gone through not SRO training, there's actually a separate administrator's training, and I think a, a lot of our personnel have already gone through it because it deals with threat assessments, it deals with bullying, it's, it's training that was already in code. What this does is this just requires us to certify that we have at least one person in each building that has gone through that training. Now, this training requirement doesn't go into effect unless the state puts that training specifically online. There was some debate about the, the need to have people go to Charlottesville to do training, or to go to Richmond to do training. This bill specifically states that unless that training is available online, that that doesn't become a requirement. So we should be okay either way, but there's that additional safeguard that, that the training can be done remotely, can be done by an administrator here in Fairfax and not have to travel anywhere. Next slide actually just lists out a number of things, a number of these things are, and reason they're listed as opposed to descriptive is a lot of these are things that you all have already done as part of your safety and security review, they're things that you were already doing. Memorandum of Understanding, there were some school divisions that didn't have a memorandum of understanding for SROs at all, so this just requires everybody to have it. I think it changes the timeline a little bit in terms of how often you're supposed to come back and reconsider from, from where you are, but it wasn't a substantial difference. The school safety mobile applica, I'm going to jump all the way down to the bottom of this, the school safety mobile application is actually, they're trying to develop a statewide system, kind of a statewide crisis response system, very similar to what we have here in, in Fairfax, that we can, we, we have particular hotlines, but they're trying to come up with a way to do it online and statewide. There are a couple of states, and I'm forgetting which ones that, that have done it, actually do have this kind of a crisis intervention hotline that is, is active throughout the state, and basically, it goes to a central location, that central location bounces the information back to the locality to allow for services at the, at the local level. So there's a kind of pilot money put in there for them to develop that kind of a, a program here in Virginia. School counselors, there were a couple of bills dealing with school counselors, this was the one personnel area that they really focused in on in terms of, of school safety. You could have made an argument that they should focus in on school psychologists, school social workers, and there are a number of different positions in schools that you could point to that deal with school safety, but school counselors is where, where they really place their focus. Two relevant bills, one requires kind of a, a change in, in an existing requirement for the amount of time that, that staff spend in direct contact with students. So they've moved that percentage from 60%, which is in place now, up to 80%. And then the staffing ratios, these are actually embedded in the standards of quality. There were two bills that changed the ratio slightly differently. I would love to be able to tell you how it's going to end, but the governor has until midnight tonight to tell us how it's going to end, because two different bills passed with two different ratios, and he has to choose between one or the other. What I can tell you is that the Appropriations Act did include language that, that adopted the, the, the staffing ratio for House Bill 2053, which is what I think Lee presented to you earlier, in terms of the money that were, that's coming back to Fairfax for, for counselors. And the Appropriations Act, if you remember your, your Virginia Code 101, anything that's in the Appropriations Act actually overrides what's in code. So the Appropriations Act, if, if a ratio is in code and in the Appropriations Act, you always look to the Appropriations Act as the, what, what the ultimate answer is. So right now, unless the governor makes some change in both the budget and in the two bills that are in front of him, the ratios that were in House Bill 2053, which is what Lee had presented in terms of the funding side, that's what would govern. All right, moving away from school safety, a couple of bills on the assessment and graduation requirement side of the world. The bill that passed dealing with the capstone project originally was going to be a required capstone project for every student in Virginia by, I think, 2023, so there was a long lead time. What ended up happening with that bill is instead of it becoming a requirement, one, the state is going to set up guidelines for localities to use if they want to implement local capstone projects. So just some, some high-level guidance from the State Board of Education, and that requirement for a capstone project would not go into effect unless the General Assembly were to pass the exact same bill in the 2020 session. So they have to come back next session and pass the exact same piece of legislation in order for that to come, become, become law. And as you will see at the end of the presentation, that could be an interesting conversation about that particular bill. And Senate Bill 1718, this deals with diagnostic, diagnostic components that are in the, our reading assessments. This really focused in specifically during the General Assembly session on something called rapid autonomic naming, the RAN assessment, which is a diagnostic that's used not only for reading, but it's also used as a, a diagnostic for dyslexia. And there was some discussion about making that required. The state didn't feel that they were ready, and, and especially the, the folks that run the PALS program at, at UVA, they didn't think that we were necessarily ready for that to be added as a component, so they're going to run a pilot and, and gather some data to see if that's something that needs to be added at specifically as part of the, as part of the reading assessments that are, are administered to our youngest, our youngest Next bill, you all are aware of, of this, this issue. Legislation did pass with some requirements on electronic room partitions. The way the bill is structured, school divisions can deal with electronic room partitions really in three different ways. One is to ensure that there are no students in the building when the, when the electronic room partition is being operated, and that literally means no students in the building, so it would have to happen out, after hours, would have to, have to happen when there weren't activities going on in the building. The alternative to that is you can operate the electronic room partitions as long as the area in which that partition is being operated is locked down and there are no students present, so you can actually just lock the area that the partition's being operated in. But that involves locking off a fairly significant perimeter and, because a room partition obviously covers substantial space in, in some cases. And then finally, the, the third option for school divisions is to install sensors in electronic room partitions. But it does have that flexibility built in, that those are the three different ways that school divisions will be able to operate those electronic room partitions. All right, I promise I won't go through all of these, but just to give you an idea of kind of the breadth of what the General Assembly deals with and the breadth of issues that they, that they've passed on, I did want to kind of include this as a listing, just as some other, I think, bills of potential interest to us that passed. Profer reforms, I know, you know, the legislation on profers changed a number of years ago, had a... Which one? That bill, that bill allows you all as a board to develop policies for students to be able to, if, if it's been prescribed, to be able to use it at schools. It also provides immunity to health, health, health room workers, nurses, and health clinic aides to actually have possession of the oils, so that they, they're not prosecuted for having, for having them, but it does put the, it, it puts it on you all to develop a policy or not develop a policy in terms of how that's handled.
I'm sorry, could you also go over the concussions in student athletes?
Yes, what that did was, there's a requirement in code right now that the, that the state's protocols for student athlete concussions be reviewed, but there was no timeline for it. This requires a biennial review, so this requires the state to go every two years to look at the concussion guidelines that they've sent out to the school divisions and updated for the newest science and everything else. So it just, it didn't change anything about the guidelines themselves, it just changed the timeline on which they have to be updated.
Okay, and also, could you talk about the seclusion and restraint bill?
The, the seclusion and restraint bill that passed largely defers to the regulations that are going through right now. They don't do, they, they actually have a very limited impact on their own. The idea was, is, was that they, I'm trying to remember exactly what they did other than essentially say that they want the, the regulations to go into effect. There wasn't much substantive, and I, Teresa might be able to help if she remembers anything that was substantive in that bill. They had debated prone restraints, they had debated some other things, but they, those did not get built into that legislation. Their legislation largely kind of stood aside to wait for the, wait for the eventual passage of the regulations that are being debated at the State Board level right now.
Could you explain the bottom right one?
Bottom right, yes. There, in Virginia, there are existing education improvement scholarship tax credits, largely targeted to low-income, low-income families. What those two bills did is one expanded the eligibility for those credits to low-income pre-K parents, so that's, that was one, and then the other expanded it to low-income students with disabilities. But it, by expanding it, I mean that they changed the thresholds, the poverty thresholds. I think right now it's at 100% of poverty, and this, the students with disability, I know- know, goes up to 300% of poverty, so more parents would be, or more families would be eligible for those tax credits. It doesn't change the amount of money that's set aside for those tax credits, it just changes the number of people that are eligible to access them.
And can you just explain briefly what those tax credits are used for, or when people are eligible?
The tax credits are used, they're, they're basically donations from, from citizens to scholarship organizations that can provide scholarships to, to parents to allow their students to go to private, private schools as opposed to public schools.
Okay, thank you. Okay, colleagues, if you have questions, just raise your hand, and then I'll put you on the list, because there's people in front of you. So, and I, on the list right now, I have Karen Corbett Sanders, Karen Kies-Gamarra, and Ms. McLaughlin. So that's who I have on the list, and we're going to let Michael finish up, and then we will can ask questions. Thank you.
All right, well, if you like this list, you'll also like this list. Because as much as, as what is done in the General Assembly is about what's passed, it's also about what doesn't pass. It's about the issues that the General Assembly has discussed and debated but don't eventually become law. The reason that's important, it's important for a couple of reasons. One is, it's important to know what they're talking about. It's important to know what's, what, what issues have, have come up and what issues have been debated. The other thing that this list gives you is this gives you the possibility of issues that may return in the future. A number of these bills failed by exactly one vote. So a number of these bills, you've got November elections coming up, if you have a change in configuration, if you have a change in personnel, that one vote may not be there. So a lot of these bills, it's just important to know that these things were discussed by the General Assembly and may be discussed by the General Assembly again in the future. And, and again, I tried to just pull kind of the breadth of issues that the General Assembly deals with, everything from, from, you know, family life, how parents are interfacing with family life, seatbelts on school buses, Equal Rights Amendment, so just a large number of issues. I did want to highlight up in the top left-hand corner, this is the bill that dealt with the burden of proof for special education private placements. That bill did not pass, but as I've noted there, the topic of that bill was sent to the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission. They had an existing special education study already in the works, and they literally just started it in December. They're adding that particular topic to the list of topics they're looking at for that special education study. All right, so what's next? A lot of what I just told you have already, has already been signed by the governor. The governor has, let's see, 27 hours to make his final decisions on bills, because he has until midnight tomorrow night to sign, amend, or veto any piece of legislation that was sent to him. Once that process is done, the General Assembly comes back on April 3 to consider his vetoes, so they can try and override, they can accept his amendments. It's just a one-day session, they don't, they don't spend much more time than just a single day on that. Any bill that passes and is signed by the governor goes into effect on July 1 of this year, unless the bill says otherwise. Some bills will build in a delayed enactment clause, so the, the SROs is a good example of that, that requirement for SR training doesn't go into effect until 2020 or so. So school divisions have time to be able to put those things into effect. And then, last slide, in terms of what's next, once they're done with that, once we're past July 1, there's no substantial planned off-session committee work. There's no commissions that were set up, there was nothing that, other than the regular meetings of ABTEL, so for the, for that. The SOL Innovation Committee, by the way, was, was repealed, so that's going to be sunset at the end of, I think, July 1. I think Francisco no longer has to go to meetings as of July 1 for that. Bullet 1, or Bullet 2 kind of explains Bullet 1, because it is, it's, it's a big election year in Virginia, because you have all 140 General Assembly seats up, so the four-year Senate seats are up at the same time as the two-year House of Delegates seats, key retirements. Before we even walk in the door to the 2020 session, we already know that the Chair of House Education, the Chair of Two, this is now outdated, because we got an announcement yesterday that another high-ranking member of the House Education Committee is retiring, so two of the three House Education Subcommittee Chairs are retiring. That also means that of the four top Republican members of the House Education Committee, there are, three of the four are retiring. So you're already going to see a huge turnover, and the third of the, the fourth of those four already chairs the House Privileges and Elections Committee, so they're unlikely to become a Chair of House Education, because they already chair a substantial committee. And the next person in line after that already chairs House Transportation. So you have the potential that somebody who is sixth or seventh in line could become Chair of House Education, so it's just a huge number of people who have already announced their retirements. On the Senate side, it's not as many, however, the, the Chair of the K-12 Subcommittee on the Education and Health Committee has announced his retirement, so you'll see a new chairman of that, of that Subcommittee. So bottom line is, is before you even have an election, there will be a substantial change in the education committees and the leadership of the education committees in the General Assembly, no matter what happens in November. And that'll be, that'll have some pretty significant implications in terms of policy, in terms of how the House operates, in terms of how education policy operates, because those are folks that have been there for a number of years, and they're, the, the style and the philosophy of the people that are coming after them may be different. So it may have, it may have implications for, for policy. And then, 2020 prefiling begins Monday, November 18, 2019, so you can go right back, right back into it, right after the election. That's all I have for you.
That's it? All right. Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Starting with Karen Corbett Sanders, followed by Karen Kies-Gamarra.
Mr. Malloy, thank you. I know that it was a crazy session, and we were all very appreciative...
Three minutes, Ms. Corbett Sanders. The clock. Thanks.
We're very appreciative of the work that you did across the board, and I personally am very appreciative of the work on the dual enrollment and, because that really does, it's a game changer for kids in our system, so thank you. One thing, I think we, as a board, and if this is a next step, is that we should be doing this annually, after every session, we should be getting a briefing like this. And if I can ask you, not only to make this an annual event, if we could get an annotated briefing of this, you've got your notes, if you can either provide us an annotation of what's here, so that we have like one or two lines on each one of these, it would be very helpful to us, as people ask questions about how it impacts us.
One, I can let you know that one thing that we do is, after the session is over, and in fact, if you look on our website, what we, yeah, we, it's, it's the government relations website, so if you just go to our, our website, where, where all of the links that we send you for bill routing and for the weekly updates, that's where you land, is on that site. All of those subject area pages that we had that were, that dealt with bill routing have now become bill reports, so it gives you a synopsis of every bill that passed in across 13 different subject areas. So there's a wealth of information out there, well beyond what's here, the synopsis we can definitely provide, but I just want to let you know that every, everything that we've dealt with, both in terms of passed bills and in terms of failed bills, we do keep in, in those, those reports, and those reports are available.
And just one clarification on the flexibility in setting the calendar?
Mm-hmm.
That goes into effect this July 1, so we are going to have to modify our calendar to...
That's been our interpretation, yeah.
And we didn't ask for a waiver for one year? Is there...
We, during the session, we tried to get that built in, we just couldn't, the patron of the bill that would have been affected wasn't interested in doing it, and the political capital even trying to do it was, was pretty significant, especially because there was a risk that the rest of the thing could be put in jeopardy, and I think that the calculation was made that the one-year transition was just not, not worth pursuing for the risk of having the, the rest of the bill fall by the wayside.
Thank you. That absolutely makes... Ms. Kies-Gamarra, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
All right, um, I wanted to go back to the licensure, and I'm not sure whether anything that was discussed down there dealt with some of our teachers trying to provide language So I'll just, I'll just give you all of my questions, because they've got me on the clock. So what I'm looking for is that streamlined process, I'm getting reports from folks that, you know, there are valuable people coming from other places who are qualified, but they can't teach because of our heavy burden of licensure. Then you had HB 1729 requiring counselors to spend 80% in direct contact with students. I don't know whether, I'm wondering whether that has additional impact on us in terms of cost or how you interpret that. And you mentioned SB 1715, where you, I think you thought it was directed at providing some sort of guidelines for dyslexia. I'm wondering if that, if I'm interpreting what you said correctly, I'm wondering how that might impact us, and are we ready for that? And then at the very, I think almost last page, there was something on there that did pass, approved legislation that mentioned proffer reforms, and I'd like to know what that was referring to.
All right, in terms of the, in, in terms, well, in terms of the language, the language licensure, there was legislation that passed last year that was, that required the state to set up a licensure process for, to streamline the licensure process for, like, dual language, dual language teachers. They have not completed that process, so whenever something gets sent to the state, it oftentimes takes time for it to run through their entire regulatory process. So that was, that was put into motion last year, so we're hoping to see that relatively soon. I'm not sure exactly how soon, but relatively soon, since it came through last session. In terms of the staff time, the 80%, that's going to vary building by building. That, that was at least the assessment that we got back in, in terms of, it really has kind of an individualized effect, depending on how principals have deployed their staff. In some places, it may have an effect, in some places, it may not have an effect. It was really hard to come up with a systematic impact of that without, you know, looking at the, really at the building by building level. The legislation dealing with the reading diagnostic test, what will end up happening with that is that's going to become a pilot program, so it's not going to have an immediate direct impact on, on what we do here in Fairfax. And as you're aware, we don't use the PALS, we use a different diagnostic screening here in Fairfax. It does not include that component, so in theory, if this component was added to the required elements of the diagnostic screening, that could have an impact on our screener as well. But as of now, it's just being done as a pilot program, so it doesn't have an immediate impact. And then finally, you asked about the proffer reforms bill. The proffer, the, the changes in proffer laws from probably three or four years ago were very restrictive in terms of what could be done. This really walks back some of those restrictions. I think, beyond my depth to tell you exactly what got walked back, but there will be additional opportunities for localities and by extension, school divisions to seek proffers that were lost because of the legislation from a few years ago.
Yeah, so I would love to see what that means for our school system, if they're, if, I don't know, just as a follow-up, I don't know.
I think we, we can work with the county, because it, it affects them more directly, but we'll work with them in terms of getting information on exactly how that's going to, how that's going to change what, what we do in terms of proffers here in Fairfax.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Schultz.
Great, I appreciate that. I'll echo what Ms. Corbett Sanders said, that this is definitely a very helpful briefing. I don't know that we've done something in this comprehensive way before. I'm also sensitive, Mr. Malloy, that when you can see the, the breadth of legislation, the flurry that happens and the intensity of Virginia's General Assembly... Oh, you're supposed to set the clock. I, I'm, you know, coming, coming from California, I, it worries me very much that Virginia, the seventh-largest economy in, in the country, tries to jam in an entire year's worth of legislative work in 16 weeks. I don't know how that's considered, 21st century, we are no longer an agrarian state. It's, it's frustrating, I'm just going to say. So I would say, Mr. Malloy, and we, I, as one board member, would welcome your reflection on this, you know, that things are dying down, but I just, I feel like this is our interface with you and with the, the General Assembly activity, it's, like, we're a microcosm of what happens. It's just this burst, and then there's nothing for, you know, up until we'll start the next General Assembly. And it doesn't really allow this board to do, I think, some more proactive, effective lobbying, and so I would love your suggestions on maybe looking at the board calendar and thinking about how we can parcel this up a little bit better, your interface with Dr. Brabran and staff on the operations side, and then with the board, because I think we need to have more, like, quarterly involvement with you, that then we don't find ourselves suddenly, it's November, oh my gosh, do we have anything that we want to really focus on, and before you know it, it's January, our delegates are all gone, because we do this in November, and then everybody heads into Thanksgiving to Christmas, so I, I just, I would say that. I know to the request about getting an annotation, I went to the government relations website, and right now, it's either you can search it by topic, but then when you go by topic, it's, you can see which bills have failed, but otherwise it just says "active." And then when you go to "active," it's, it's a lot of work to try and parcel down and figure out what that means, and one of the bills on the MOU said something like the governor's act of whatever language, I mean, it's just, there's, there's technical language in there. I just want to know in two to three sentences, what does this mean for FCPS operations? So I, I would like us to think about it, maybe, you know, Ryan, you've been the, the state liaison for us on the board, but I don't want us to just keep doing it the way we've always done it, because I don't think we've been able to capitalize on Mr. Malloy's work that's down there, and, and this is not a reflection on you, Ryan, at all, this is, I'm saying to the board, many of us have served for eight years, or seven years together, let's think about how we can maybe do this differently, so that, again, we're not just getting, it's a cram session every time, it's a cram to go in with our priorities, it's a cram to get the updates, and a lot of really exciting things are happening here, but I feel like it's, we're not, we're not able to really be engaged in the work the way we should.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin.
So, no, I'm actually, I'm not trying to put Mr. Malloy completely on the spot, but I, I put my three minutes in, because I would like to have his thoughts on, he's been serving for how long?
This was my 19th session.
Yeah, so I, to my question, I would love your thoughts on, am I completely off the wall, or, you know, what, what, what can we do? Yeah, that's all right. What can, you know, what, you know, just, you know, what, what do you think about the input I just gave you?
I think there are always opportunities, there are always opportunities to have discussions. The nature of the General Assembly session lends itself to that kind of feast and famine process. Legislators, they're, they're part-time legislators, they're, you know, once they're out of session, they have day jobs. They do legislative issues, obviously, they're, you know, they're doing constituent work, they're, they're, they're out in the community, but they're, they're kind of on hiatus, so there are opportunities to have discussions, and I think you can capitalize on those when you have people back here at home. But it's just the nature of the process, that because you have so much legislative activity, and if you come in too early, then they've forgotten that you've talked to them six months prior about a particular issue, so there's an issue of timing, trying to make sure that you're ramping up as the General Assembly is coming into session. So I, I think there, there are always opportunities. The other... other thing is, is that in terms of what the General Assembly does, uh, you, you all need to think as a board of what the state doesn't do that you would want them to do. Oftentimes, what our advocacy in Richmond is, is we don't want a particular bill to pass because it places a new requirement on you, because it places a new financial requirement. Um, so that's what a lot of our discussion down there is. There's less discussion in terms of places where the state is quote-unquote "in your way," and you want them to back off to give you more flexibility as a board, or to give you more authority as a board. Um, those discussions don't happen nearly as often because you, as a board, already have a pretty significant amount of authority on your own to do a lot of the things you want to do. So I think one discussion you could have as a board is, where are there areas that the state has requirements that don't make sense for what we're trying to do here in Fairfax, and then try and craft legislation to get those requirements out of the way? Um, so it's, you know, you, you need to talk about the requirements that are in place, but you also need to talk about where the locus of that requirement is coming from. Is it a state, i- is it, is it something that's in code? Is it something that's in state regulation? Which is a different type of conversation, because state regulations, that's a different lobbying. You're lobbying the State Board of Education as opposed to the Virginia General Assembly or the Virginia Governor. Um, is it a federal requirement? That's yet another conversation to have. Federal lobbying is a very, very different thing than state lobbying. At the state level, when I go to Richmond, I have 17 delegates out of 100, and I have nine senators out of 40 that have some connection to Fairfax County. When you go to Capitol Hill, you have two senators out of 100 who represent the entirety of Virginia, not just Fairfax, and only three congressmen out of 435 that represent this area. Um, so obviously, in, in terms of the influence and in terms of the math, uh, very, very different environments at the state level and the federal level, but that would have to be part of your conversation, is are those requirements coming from the federal level, the state level, the regulatory level? Is it a budget impediment? Um, I, I think that those can all be fruitful discussions here at the, at, at, at your board table.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I just want to, um, restate for my colleagues, what I, what I'm really asking for is, the General Assembly's in session for up to two months a year. That leaves us 10 months to better utilize, I think, Mr. Malloy in the board's review, kind of like we do the budget. We don't cram in the budget in one month or two months of deliberation. We actually do it almost all year round. So I, that's where I'm more of going, is how do we work with you in the off-session, which is 10 luxurious months, to kind of have a, a better grasp of what we would like to advocate for, um, when we go into the next General Assembly?
Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Evans.
There are a couple of bills that I, we didn't talk about, and I, I'm not sure if I can't, I don't see them on here. Um, I answered one on my own, um, but the one on, um, I, I don't understand, because looking at it, maybe I'm not reading it right. There's one on, um, students with disabilities and IEPs and, um, requiring school boards to establish guidelines, um, to basically, it sounds like, provide information that is developmentally appropriate for a child with an IEP, um, on sort of, um, like awareness of their, their body and self-protection against potential sexual assault, it sounds like, um, or, or inappropriate actions by others. And it, it passed out of, um, subcommittee and the committee, and then it just says it was referred. So I, I don't know if you-
Yeah, it didn't pass. A bill, a bill at, at this point, if, when you look at a bill's history, unless it says that it's, that it's been sent to the governor, then that legislation just, that, it didn't proceed any further in the process. Um, so the bills you're referring to, and I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, there was a House version and a Senate version. Neither one, neither one passed.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at, uh, 1595.
Yeah, neither, neither one passed. Um, neither one went forward.
Yeah, that's too bad. I, I feel like that may have been, um, I mean, it may have put a requirement on us, but I think it's potentially good for, for students with disabilities. And then, um, what about the one on the teachers, um, requiring teachers to have 45 minutes set aside of planning time? There was no discussion on that.
Didn't go forward. Oh, there was discussion, actually, and I think that that bill may have made it out of the Policy Committee, but then it was sent to the Appropriations Committee, and because it had a fiscal impact, it didn't move forward.
So that was pretty much it, is that if it has, I mean, that's important for us to know, that if it has a, um, fiscal impact, it sort of, kind of goes to die?
At least in the House, that, um, the, the House and the Senate kind of have different protocols in terms of how they handle legislation. The House will oftentimes pass on a bill, will, will pass a bill out of the Policy Committee and send it to the Appropriations Committee. Most of the time, the bill won't come out of the Appropriations Committee, it will just, it, it will die there. The Senate oftentimes does it differently. The Senate will pass a bill, they'll pass it all the way through, but they'll put what they refer to colloquially as the clause on the bill, which basically, at the very end of the bill, it says, "This bill does not go into effect unless there's an appropriation that's made to put this bill into effect." So that kind of has the same impact as a bill going to the Appropriations Committee and dying, because if a bill doesn't have associated appropriations, it can pass through, um, but it doesn't go into effect because it has that clause attached to it.
And then the last one I had a question about, I think we already do this, but I just want to confirm, there was a bill put forward, so it must be that other school districts aren't doing it, or aren't doing it consistently, um, was public schools on lockdown drills and prior notice to parents. Um, I, I don't see that it really went anywhere. I don't know why. I mean, I think that's a good thi, I mean, that's fundamentally a good thing. But do we, do we have as a, it wouldn't be a policy, but as a practice, uh, all parents are notified in advance of a lockdown drill?
All of our schools don't notify in advance. We, we, we did a survey of this just to see, and ours, some it's before, some it's immediately after. Um, and that's something we're reviewing ourselves, is what, what, what we think our best practice be. Some, some of our principals at the beginning of the year outline what the, um, overall approach is going to be. So it did generate discussion, frankly, even in several districts, that it was, it varied really by school. Um, and were we looking at that as one of our best practices?
Well, my avic, my advocacy on that part would be that we establish, like, a uniform policy. I mean, I understand there's latitude and certain things for, 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 um, principals to do things that are, um, responsive to their communities. There's nothing about this that I don't think there's good to have a policy that says, hey, look, we're going to let parents know in advance, because especially with elementary-age children, that causes often a lot of, like, consternation, anxiety, cry, I mean, you know, even my own child. So I, I, I would, even if this didn't get traction at the state, sometimes I don't, because the state tells us so is not a good reason to do something, and if they don't tell us to do so, it isn't a good reason to go ahead and do something.
Right. There's, I, I, I would just say, and we can discuss it now or later, there's a little bit of nuance to it. There were some concerns, if we advertise in advance the time of the lockdown, that we could be inviting in some security concerns, that someone knows that is when the drill's going to be done. Just, just saying it came up as part of the discussion down there, and I think we would want to be thinking about how we would address someone who would raise that concern. That we were telegraphing in advance a certain drill that would then, someone would use that to, to an advantage, much like the fire drill has been used.
Well, I don't, I don't want to get us off track, but I don't know if we have a next step, if we have a planned next step out of this, but I would like us to continue that discussion, because I do think that that's an important for us to understand. And for me, that's something that has come to me from different parents, different schools across my district. Um, and tha, that's an important que, question about how we communicate and when we communicate. So I would like us to have that conversation.
Sure.
Ms. Evans.
Uh, thank you. Uh, first of all, um, Michael, I want to thank you for, uh, keeping us informed throughout the legislative session. I think, you know, you're, you're running really fast in there, and you do a great job of, of keeping us up to date. I just had one question. That was on, uh, uh, slide 16, where, um, I was not aware that they had repealed the SOL Innovation Committee. That has been a very significant for us, um, a significant venue for us to, to advocate. I, is there something that's replacing it? Where we're all, where will our advocacy on these issues take place from now on?
I think the, the advocacy will go back to where it was prior to this, really, which is on the General Assembly side, but also on the State Board side, the State Board of Education. Um, what, really what happened with the SOL Innovation Committee is that it was put into place, um, a, a blend of legislators and a blend of citizens that were involved, and educators were involved in this committee. Um, initially, there were some very big ideas discussed, and, um, what ended up happening was that internally, the rules for how things were considered by that committee were changed, so that essentially legislators were granted themselves a veto over anything that came out of the SOL Innovation Committee. So, uh, anything that came out of the SOL Innovation Committee initially had to come out from a majority of members. The rules changed so that the, anything that came out of the SOL Innovation Committee had to come out with a majority of legislators and a majority of members. Um, that, so essentially what you were doing is, was you were replaying debates you were having in the General Assembly at the SOL Innovation Committee, which was great from a discussion standpoint, but didn't really further anything, because if it was going to run into trouble in the General Assembly, it was going to run into trouble in the SOL Innovation Committee. So I think the idea was, is that that kind of had outlived its usefulness. So now, um, you know, the, the discussion goes back to the State Board of Education, uh, and then goes back to the General Assembly, uh, kind of on their, their parallel tracks in, in terms of what they deal with.
So the Board of Education, I, we, because we, we have substantial advocacy that we need to, I mean, with graduation rates, particularly with absenteeism, absent, absenteeism, um, the fact that, that students are considered absent even if they're in the hospital, isn't that correct? That there's no, that there's no, that even if it's an excused absence, that, um, it still counts as absenteeism if it's over a certain, a chronic absenteeism, if it's over a certain number of days?
Yeah, it's for the chronic absenteeism measure.
Right. And so I think because I've heard of, of a number of cases where, yeah, a student is literally ill, and they, you know, they're, they're considered chronically absent. I have a, a constituent who said she got, um, uh, notice from the school saying, "Your child is chronically absent," and her child had been out ill. Um, so I do think that we need to get clarity on that. So if, if it's the Board of Education, then I, I think all of us, not just you, but all of us, need to know where we need to focus that advocacy, and do we need to be connecting with individuals on the Board of Education? Do we write letters? Because that's going to make a difference at a lot of our schools. So I, I, I was interested to see, um, because we also had, you know, members of the SOL Innovation Committee that were able to make, uh, great strides.
Any other board members before I do go-bags? All right, um, I have Ms. McLaughlin for a go-back.
So I'm very glad that, um, Ms. Evans brought up the issue on the chronic absenteeism. Um, Mr. Malloy, I, I'm going to ask my colleagues to really reflect on this one in particular. I think it is one of the most difficult pieces of legislation, that if we don't place it as a top priority for the next General Assembly, I think we're doing a disservice to the school system and to our families and students. Um, I had a long conversation with one of my high school principals and the Director of Student Services about, uh, first of all, the letter that Fairfax County Central Offices created this year, which was well-meaning, but the message was wholly, um, in conflict with public health best practice, which is essentially, the message was, "Your child has missed X percentage of the school year to date," and these were sent in October, when kids had not been in school for more than four to six weeks. So a child who could be out for three days with the flu, we were sending messages to parents saying, "Your child has missed X percentage of the school year to date," and, you know, and which of course makes it a high percentage, because you've had hardly any school days, to the numbers absent just for being sick with the flu, and saying, "It is so important that you get your child to school, blah, 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 blah." And this is really hard on your child's academic success, but it's also impacts the school division and our accreditation, blah, 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 blah. Well, as a result, now, we've got parents that, you know, are not understanding the complexity of it, they're plying their kids with Ibuprofen and sending them to school with fevers. And, um, one parent, A, told me recently, the child came up with a brown bag that she had thrown up in, and said to, you know, the, the cafeteria aide, "I'm not feeling well." And they had to immediately call the parents, say, "You've got your kid..." "Oh, yeah, well, she did have a fever." I mean, so I, I say this because then the principal walked me through that apparently there are still categories that the school division can code for why kids are absent, including for being sick or a religious holiday or whatever. And there are these codes, but there was a lack of understanding of who creates the codes. Does it the school division? Is it the state? Which ones are allowed? Which ones won't count against our accreditation for absenteeism? And so, as a next step, I would just ask everybody, I think we have got to get this on a future work session, um, to address. And it's, I, I think it's very important, because we may not be able to fix the, to the end of the school year, but we have a lot of confused parents, and this just, of course, cropped up in September. So since I became a, an FCPS alumni parent as of September, I didn't even know these changes occurred till families were calling me. But it is, board members, if you're not hearing this, it is definitely a problem. So, um, Mr. Malloy, can you at least provide just a little more clarity on what is this existing legislation, and what should we be doing to fix it so we're not encouraging sick kids to come to school?
Well, I, I can speak to it from the standpoint that it's actually not legislation. It, it's part of the State Board of Education's Standards of Accreditation Regulations. Um, so it was a regulatory decision, not a code. So it was, it didn't come from the General Assembly. It did come as part of the, the Standards of Accreditation Reforms, um, in, in terms of their, their, uh, the dashboard that they created, uh, for the Accountability Dashboard. Chronic absenteeism was one of the measures that they included as, as part of the, the measure of, of, uh, of, um, school division performance. But that was done, that was on, as I said, the regulatory side with the State Board of Education as opposed to the General Assembly.
So, so thank you for that clarity. So then my question would be, is, do we either A, lobby the State Board of Education to let them know how harmful this is actually to students, families, and learning, or B, where, is there any teeth to this thing, and we just need to basically inform our public, "Don't pay attention to the accreditation thing?" Because I, I just can't tell, but it's just bad regulation that's driving bad decisions on the end of this, on the side of the school board and the school division.
Well, you actually have, there's, there's a third option in addition to the two that you listed. One is, is something you definitely should do in terms, in terms of, uh, you know, providing information to the State Department and to the Board of Education of the impact of the, the decision that they made there. Um, the other option is, is that a state code can override the decision of the State Board of Education. Um, so you could come back with legislation next year to change the requirements in terms of how chronic absenteeism is measured. And that would, uh, that would be what's called an exempt action. So the General Assembly would pass a bill telling the Board of Education to do something, and the Board of Education would have to do that in an expedited fashion that wouldn't go through the normal 18-month process, regulatory process. So that is another option that's available to you, is to go through the legislative process to override what the State Board has done. Um, but I think what you really should do before using that option is to have the discussion with the State Board, and to have the discussion with the state in terms of the impact that that decision has made, and whether or not that impact is, or whether or not that decision will be revisited. Um, because it's, it's a pretty big hammer to use the General Assembly to change what the State Board has done.
But at minimum, we're looking at 18 months, even if we lobby the Board of Education to, to fix their regulation?
Regulatory decisions are slow. Um, there's no, there's no such thing as a fast regulatory decision. The, the process takes a long time. The only way to really expedite it is to go through the General Assembly, and, you know, your General Assembly session just ended, so the next opportunity you have for that winded open up would be, you know, in, in next January.
All right, thank you.
Could I, could I ask if we could get some clarity on what exceptions, if any, there are? Because this has come up before, and I, I think the board would, would welcome that. Are there exceptions, or, and you don't have to answer now, but-
I, I, I was going to say, I, I don't know well enough. I, Francisco, I think, was, had, had someone who was-
I was just going to add that when the State Board of Ed did make that decision, it was part of their ESSA plan, and in the new, um, Leaving No Child Left Behind to ESSA indicates that- indicates that chronic absenteeism can be one of additional measures, and each state had to identify an additional measure for student success, so why it would take some time is not just to change it at the regulatory level at the state, it would then have to be a revision to an amendment to the ESSA plan that would have to get approved by the U.S. Department of Education. Currently, I believe there's 37 states that chose chronic absenteeism in their ESSA plan, and so it was one of the possible, it's not the only one, and so it could be changed, but when the state did submit their ESSA plan for approval, that was one that the State Board at that time chose. So it's a little bit more nuanced to just changing it, not to my knowledge.
Teresa might have one additional-
You know, one example would be a student on homebound instruction.
There you go, thank you.
That's one of the examples, and I could certainly have the team provide some updated information and add it to a brave and briefing if you'd like.
But it's very limited, in terms of the, very minimal, limit, very little to none. But anyway, I just wanted to provide clarity to Ms. McLaughlin, if you're asking about the changes, why it takes some time, it's, it's not just a State Board decision, it would then be that, plus then it would be required, an appeal to changing the, an amendment at the U.S. Department of Ed, and having that replaced with something else, so it's very cumbersome.
Ms. Johnson, when you provide the update, could you also share with us-
U.S. Department of Ed.
If those decisions, the exceptions, are things that can be changed by the state?
Sure, like a student activity, so a school activity would also be included as an excused absence, I have to check on the religious exemption, that was one on the list.
And health, but yeah, and if they currently are or are not, if we could get better understanding of what needs to happen, even for those tweaks to happen, for those to be included, before we go to the larger, longer-term flow.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Kies-Gamaris, next.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with a possible next step, which does encompass some of this discussion that was occurring. I, I, I think we may need to have a, a briefing on kind of the status of what the laws are, that we may need to be concerned about going forward, and rather than waiting just until the legislative session, that way we can focus on some of these things, whether they be from the Virginia State Board of, Board of Education, or whether they be from the legislature, I'm not sure which ones you deal with, but I, I think it may be helpful to us to know where some of this is coming from, and then maybe set up some strategies as to how we want to do it, you know, aft, not this week, but, you know, sometime soon, rather than waiting until January.
I think that's a great idea, Ms. Kies-Gamaris, so you have that articulated as a next step, is correct? Okay.
It was intended to be a next step, yes.
All right. All right. And Ms. Corbett Sanders, you will be the last person, because we were on time.
It's a 30-second, I promise. Adding on to Ms. Kies-Gamaris' next step, I think if we can put a timeframe on it, because with pre-filing beginning on November 18th, we have to move back before that, and so it means that we're actually going to have to start meeting with those members of the legislature that may not have, be in contested races, to try to start moving some of, or briefing them on our priorities. So we may need, with the pre-filing being November 18th, that we may need our legislative adoption, our legislative package, package adopted earlier than we have in the past, so perhaps in the late September timeframe.
And that was going to be one suggestion that I was going to make, in terms of, you can look at your existing timeline, because you do have a process by which you make updates to your legislative program, we can look at how that's parceled out, in terms of when that process starts and when that process finishes, to allow you to have a longer, broader discussion on some of these issues. That would be one, one fairly easy venue for you all to, to make use of.
That's my thought process, is that we actually need to have more of a strategic planning process for implementing our, for developing that legislative package, and so that was the only reason I-
But can it be sooner than September? Anyway, can we talk about the timing?
We can talk about timeframe, I just think that no later than September.
Right. All right, so we're going to look at next steps, I, while we're bringing that up, I just want to thank you, Mr. Malloy, for your many years of service. I have been the state legislative liaison, off and on, when Mr. McElveen has, had, off years, and I know we have done this various ways, this report out. We have brought you in partway through the year, and you, you had some conversation then, and then at the end, and, and so, what I would like for you to do too, is, you know, I think you've heard people really appreciate this, but if you think it's valuable, and I know it's difficult sometimes for your time, but if you can think about, maybe if you want to do it twice during, if you could do it once right prior to the session, or if there's any breaks, I know sometimes, there is, sometimes there isn't, just your suggestions, because you said you were going to make a couple suggestions, and if you could make a suggestion on when, other than this end-of-the-year time, what's passed and what hasn't, is if you think would be another good time for you to report to the Board, in addition, of course, to this pre-planning session. All right, next steps. First one was by Ms. Corbett Sanders. Everybody good with that? All right, Ms. Kies-Gamaris. Everybody good? Dr. Brabran?
I'm just checking because of different styles. Are you doing both the language and the next step approval, or are you just going through, is everybody good with the language, and then you're doing, you're doing both at once?
I'm asking the maker to see if they like that, and then I'm looking for head nods, just if we're good. Ms. Schultz. Oh, oh, a little steps, okay. Next, combine Ms. Evans and Ms. McLaughlin.
Not mine, because I was really clear that I want this on a work session, so it's not just, it's a legislative priority for the next session, I think we're going to need to do some work. So I'm, I'm-
What do you want to put, you just want to add work session?
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Let's just add, consider adding chronic as legislative priority and establishing a-
Plan for a work session.
On this topic.
Prior to the next, prior to developing our-
Yep. Everybody good? Ms. Evans, you have a comment?
Well, it's, it's on the next one. This is, this is asking for the exception specifically on chronic absenteeism, in other words, what doesn't count? Does a child in the hospital, does a religious holiday not count, or does it still count? I just want to get clarity on that.
Or are there any exemptions, exactly?
Yeah, any, any, any exceptions on what counts as an absenteeism in, when we're defining chronic absenteeism?
And can we include field trips that are curriculum-related? Because I've had questions on that.
I basically just want to know what any, any exceptions are.
I get that. For some reason, I'm just saying this out loud, I think Mary Ann Panarelli says, "There's nothing." That's, that's my understanding, but we need to clarify.
There are, for example, I know students that are on homebound, that's an exception, and students that are involved in a school activity such as a field trip are, are not counted as an absence.
Right. But, but you're, you're looking for-
We'll follow up on this next step, so that we get-
Can we add clarity on who makes the decisions on those exceptions? I think for me, that would be important to know where those changes would need to happen.
That'll be part of the work session, hopefully.
Mm-hmm.
On the exceptions.
On the exceptions.
Any exceptions, yeah. I, I think, Teresa, you understand what we're looking for, right?
Yes, I mean, we're following whatever the state is indicating or the exceptions, but I'm happy to add that information.
And if it's just students on homebound and nothing else.
Got it.
Dr. Ivey, do you have a comment?
Not about that one, but Ms. Schultz had asked, I think, before she stepped out, she asked, it's, it's not just for us to continue to the discussion, but she wanted us to bring back a, a recommendation to the Board.
Yeah. Okay. Before we go to Elizabeth's, let's go back down to the last one, give the Board a briefing on laws to be concerned-
It's not laws, it's priorities to be considered.
Right. Because- It may also be the State Board of Education, or the requirements that Mr. Duran mentioned, whatever those things are, I think we need to have a heads-up as to what could be coming down the road, and how we might be able to affect change ahead of time.
Can I suggest that it's on priorities to be considered as part of a legislative and regulatory package?
So I would just say, why don't we clarify that, since the Board goes into August recess, unless you're saying no later than the end of September? But otherwise, if we want it- Mid-September.
Yeah. Really?
Well, I just asked Michael if that's reasonable, he said yes, and, and I think we have to look at our schedule again, early, mid-September is really crazy with all the back-to-school activities, and, and, and so I think, you know, September's end is a better timeframe. All right, Ms. Schultz?
I would just say, I did not intend for it to be delimited to elementary schools, so if we could take it, how, just how notifying parents, I, I wouldn't even say necessarily before, I would say how and when, continue discussion about, about how and when the school system notifies parents about lockdown drills, and bring a recommendation to the Board. Because you may, you may bring us a recommendation that says you don't want to do it before. I would argue that I don't want that, but I'd at least like to hear what the recommendation is.
Well, Ms. Schultz, I'll just tell you, I, I mentioned to Dr. Brabran, there's no reason we couldn't notify them the week before, that there will, it will take place at some point the following week, and then no one knows the, the date and time.
I don't, I don't want to drill down the rabbit hole here, that's why I want them to bring us a recommendation. Okay.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
All right, thank you all.
Ms. Kovacs, mine wasn't captured. Ms. Corbett Sanders, I went right after her at the top, but she had made the comment about wanting to get just a, a post-session briefing, like we're doing now on an annual basis. I was saying that I think we need to have some, some additional meetings similar to our, our budget process, where we would meet almost more on a quarterly basis with Mr. Malloy in that 10-month off-session, so that we can build toward our legislative priorities, not just do it all in one setting like we've been, so-
No, I, I made the same comments, I think, after you did as well, and I did ask Mr. Malloy to come back with, with suggestions.
Yeah, I think that would be great. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Ms. Ms. Corbett Sanders has an announcement.
So this work session is adjourned, and we will now go into a closed session. The Board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding litigation and specific legal, legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711a, 7 and AA of the Code of Virginia, specifically pending Title IX and other federal matters, special education matters, and student safety. Do I have a motion? Motion is made by Mr. Moon, seconded by Ms. Darinak Kovacs. All those in favor? That motion is unanimous. We're now in closed session.